...for them to be successful in their future endeavors. We are very aware of the need to look at the community as a whole and what taxpayers can reasonably afford. This is the second work session to discuss potential changes to the configuration of our school district. Do you think it's me? At this point, it is still a fact-finding mission and not whether everyone agrees. There will be the normal two courtesies of the floor. The first one should be used to identify something you would like us to consider and the second one to go into more detail, if necessary. We will limit the first courtesy of the floor to 30 minutes. The discussion part of the work session itself will be set at 90 minutes. The reality after tonight, there will be still be unanswered questions. The board will try to set a plan for what comes next. On that note, we will call the work session for the Jersey Shore Area School Board, August the 29th, 2022, to order. Roll call, Mr. Enders.
Yeah.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mrs. Calhoun.
Here.
Ms. Dobler.
Here.
Ms. Edwards.
Here.
Grant.
Here.
Mr. Kinley. Mrs. Petrowski.
Here.
Mrs. Stemler.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas.
Here.
All my members present.
Next, please join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First thing on the agenda is the courtesy of the floor. The courtesy of the floor will be public comment on about the discussion. State your name, address, and the agenda. Well, there's no agenda item necessary. You would like to address, you will have three minutes.
Thank you.
We're discussing a reconfiguration. I have something that I'd like to read you. I'm going to read it off here because I have three minutes. But I gave you all the information and some of you I didn't print off enough. So anyways, I'd like to gift a greenhouse to the Jersey Shore Area School District on behalf of two local educators who have just recently passed. It was my intention to fund a yearly scholarship in their name. However, I believe the greenhouse will serve the educators and students of this district, as well as the community, much better. Without going into details to much of the background story that I have and why this is important to me personally, let's just say this. It might spark a light of interest to maybe a non-traditional student who isn't too much into academics. It's my thought that the CTE program could build the foundation base for the greenhouse. This way, the students could take pride and ownership in its resurrection. My vision is to make the greenhouse used threefold. One, to house some of the teaching specimens from where they're going to move from. Two, to give the kindergarteners a place to grow their plants in the spring that they distribute throughout the community. And three, to provide a place to grow plants for the community garden. I have been in contact with a Jersey Shore Elementary kindergarten educator, Jeannie Reader. Last spring, I made an heirloom seed kit. I have it right down there. Where am I at? Seed kit for her to use with her students. However, with the entire C-19 debacle, we never made contact. The heirloom seed kits will be replenished by the students themselves by harvesting the seeds from one of the vegetables or flowers grown in the garden. It would be an honor for the Jersey Shore Area School District to be the new home for some of the plants that I once took care of on top of Olmer Hall 30 years ago on the Lock Haven University campus and for the past four years here in Jersey Shore on Maple Street. You see, one of those educators asked this first-year scared biology educator student in his botany lab, who had just broke a mercury thermometer, and if you know what that is, it's a disaster, to be his assistant while he helped me clean it up. Dr. Settlemeyer was not only my advisor, colleague, and mentor, but he was my friend. So I'd like you to think about it. I gave you some examples. I mean, I would like to pick it myself. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Hi, my name is Dr. Lily Langwa. I live on Damrun Road in Cummings Township. This is not the first time I've come to speak with you. I waited three hours patiently to speak for three minutes, and it was a lot. I'm so grateful this is a quick meeting about the closing of the Jersey Shore School. So my daughter goes to first grade now. My son will go there next year. I'm not going to talk about his hearing loss and his disability and cry in front of you. Instead, I'm going to ask about some numbers, and I'm sure you've all looked at this very carefully. What construction numbers you have to annex, add an annex to the Jersey Shore Middle School to bring all the students from Saladesburg and Avis, should you choose to close one or both? I have no idea what those numbers are, but I understand the heating and the air-conditioning units in Saladesburg is an issue. I'm sure a grant can be found. I can help write it. If you got quotes pre-pandemic for the annex to the middle school here, I could only imagine that they've doubled in the last couple of years. I think that should be revisited. I'm sure you're doing that. Your due diligence. I also want to bring up that elementary schools were distributed broadly across the county originally, and they've done this across the nation. They didn't come with up with this idea on a, you know, harebrained idea. This was planned and thought out. This school at Saladesburg serves really amazing purpose. These teachers know every single student in that program. Can I say the same thing for Jersey Shore Middle School? I am sure, or elementary school, I'm sure they do a great job there as well. Anecdotally, one of my friends taught is a special teacher in the elementary school in Jersey Shore, and their kindergarten classrooms are so large. Her daughter was a kindergartner last year, and she called it controlled chaos because you're at capacity, whatever it is, maybe it's more efficient financially, whatever the bottom line might be, whether it's children or money. You have to choose that bottom line, what's more important. But at Saladesburg, you're right. We have lower enrollment. We have, I think my daughter had 17 in her kindergarten classroom. That's a prized number. I don't think that should be looked down upon because it's not efficient enough financially or fiscally. I think that should be considered. So the smaller classroom, it's more effective. It's more immediate and intimate setting. And clearly, children with disabilities such as my son. There's a kid in my neighborhood has Asperger's and other autism. These things are quite common, and I don't think making a huge zoo for all these students is the best course of action. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Helm.
I'll defer to the second one.
Okay. John Charman.
There are three people present tonight that did something that I believe has been a lack of courage to do for over the last seven years in the Kansasman Kick Down Road. Myself, Mr. Pryor, and Mrs. Helm, we all worked together. When we come into office in 2007, this district was bankrupt. We worked hard over the time we were there to get this school district uprighted financially and remodeling done of the elementary school, which had not been done before. We closed Nippen Oaks, hurt nobody. That was the most expensive school to operate. Those children over there with that school over there was the most expensive room with a sewage plant and heating it with fuel oil. If there would have been an emergency happen, I do not know where those children would have gone. The same can be said for Saladesburg. That's probably one of the most expensive schools we have to operate right now with it. And we're also sewage plant operators up there. And when it comes to schools, Avis is an open concept school. How do you protect those kids? Where do they go in an emergency? Emergency happens around here with hospitals within five minutes. I've heard all this stuff before, and Mr. Pryor and that will tell. We got savaged. Heard all this stuff a long time ago, back in 2012, back through then, closing the school. Heard the same thing. Those kids had made the adjustment to come in from over in the valley without any problems, as far as I know, with it. I congratulate Mr. Kinley for his stance on things financially. And also, the big thing is the safety factor, which Mrs. Stemler's brought up with things with it. And for the reading in the paper, the school board member that admonished the committee for bringing up negativity about closing the schools. Well, there's a lot of negativity, okay? But this is financial. This affects the district. I lost my wife. I've lost half of my income, okay, with it. So, and this, with you, with the school board superintendent. Mary, you've been around here in a part of the school board for, what, eight, nine years now?
Seven.
Huh?
Actually, six.
Okay. And you were administrator before.
And a teacher.
Yeah, okay. At this point, there should be no more fact-finding. You've been a member of the school board that have kicked the can down the road to where we are at this point. We're in the same place was that we were in 2006, when the prior school board ran this into the ground and had 25% tax rates and massive layoffs. And one of the persons that was on that board here is here tonight, sitting up here. And now we're back to the same situation we are. It's time some people started getting some courage and doing what was right for the school district and kids and the taxpayers. Because I can't afford to live here much longer.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board at this time? Being that this is a work session, it doesn't have to be exactly an agenda item because we have no agenda items.
I just have a question. I'm wondering how the 2022 construction project went over the summer and whether or not it's on time. That's, is it pretty well handled?
Pretty well done. The only thing that's happening right now is as they bring equipment back online is commissioning of the system to make sure that it's functioning correctly. And this week after, no one, there's no one working during the school day. But after the end of the school day this week, there's some final ceiling tiles, caulking, that type of small stuff. But other than commissioning, there are some units to set yet on the auditorium, but it's not disrupting the school.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
All right, we will close courtesy of the floor at this point and move on to the discussion. After the last work session, it was apparent that Mr. Kinley did not finish what he needed to present. Therefore, we will start with Mr. Kinley to continue and complete his thoughts. Lee.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity. I'd like to reflect for a minute or two on the last meeting and some comments that were made. It was noted that small class sizes at Saladesburg and Avis have resulted in higher student test scores, a commendable and something we can really be proud of for sure. However, shouldn't JSE teachers and students that consistently have larger classes be afforded the opportunity to experience the same success? The first-day enrollment numbers for Avis show an average class size of 16 and for Saladesburg, 17. These numbers compare to an average class size of 21 at JSE. This inequity is not an anomaly for '22, '23, but is consistent with both '20, '21 and '21, '22 enrollment numbers. Another issue, Mrs. Dobler noted that she has received comments as to why there is again talk about closing schools. The last vote on school closure was November 2019. Think about what has happened in the last three years. We've had COVID. We've had to increase our focus on safety and security due to school shootings. There's been, there was a decline in elementary enrollment by 46 in the years '20, '21, and '21, '22 compared to 1920. We're experiencing the highest inflation in decades. We continue to have aging building and parking lots that will require major renovations and upgrades, and they need to be addressed. I believe we certainly have justification to consider some sort of school consolidation again. It is irresponsible to not look at all opportunities, especially when elementary enrollments are declining while costs are increasing, as evidenced by the hiring of five elementary teachers in the most recent two years. I too have received comments from taxpayers about school closures. As facts become known regarding small class sizes, enrollment declines, new teacher hires, et cetera, and the probable result and impact on future real estate tax bills, taxpayers are having a greater understanding of the need for school closures. One more issue from the last meeting. I was somewhat surprised of the reluctance to incur additional debt to address capital project needs. We have, Hunt has identified and administration has confirmed, we have parking lot repairs totaling $2.5 million, $6.5 million in cost to renovate or upgrade Saladesburg and Avis, and $12.5 million for athletic field renovations, including a new stadium complex. We can't be short-sighted and unwise to not address $10.8 million in building deferred maintenance. So borrowing, I think, is inevitable. We don't have any wiggle room to grab a hold of any reserves other than $1 million in capital projects money. Okay, moving forward, I want to discuss briefly our current and future financial considerations. As we know, we're the highest district in the county as far as real estate tax mileage, although South Williamsport this year has caught up with us. But the other, the other six, we're at 18.38. Williamsport's at 17.24, and Lowell Sock is the lowest at 15.35. We cannot and should not expect taxpayers to continue to be burdened with high taxes. The inflation, as I mentioned, the current rate is expected to continue through '22, 2022. Predictions are for the, an annual rate of 3% to 4% after that. Higher inflation rates will undoubtedly result in increased costs of salaries and benefits, goods, services, and surely put an additional pressure on future budgets moving forward. Our current budget, '22, '23 budget, even with the $760,000 in additional state funding that we didn't expect, the budget deficit is still $600,000. The actual deficit for '21, '22 projected by Ben is projected to be $250,000. And of course, we will know that in a couple of months when the audit is completed. Our unrestricted fund balance, in 2021, the audited number was $5.6 million. It's projected to drop to $3.5 million at the end of the current fiscal year, a decrease of $2 million or 34%. We are expected to continue to see an uptick in mandatory pieces rates. That's our retirement for the next seven years. I think we're going to be spending money on safety and security. We know that we have one SRO for all five school buildings in the district. But as a recent, as a result of the recent school killings, I think parents are likely to demand, excuse me, a physical presence at each school rather than one to cover all buildings. There will also be the need to spend big dollars to upgrade our exterior doors and windows to withstand potential gunfire. Charter and cyber school costs continue to be high. Recent attempts in Harrisburg to overhaul charter school funding hit a dead end, and there appears to be no reasonable expectation that legislation will be enacted to provide relief in the near future. We know that, excuse me, that we know that there's a need to provide additional resources and expansion of course offerings at the secondary level. Our CTE program is a valuable asset, but it needs additional dollars to run the program more efficiently and maintain compliance with state requirements. Our insurance premiums increased $43,000 this past year, an increase of 20% compared to 8.5% in the previous year. We currently, a year or so ago, we hired a JSO facilitator and a secretary, two positions, to the tune of roughly $200,000 a year. But those positions for last year and the current year are funded by ESRS funds. But when they run out at the end of '22, '23, the board will either have to pick up that as part of our operating budget or we will dismiss those two positions. So we have a lot of things to consider moving forward. I think it's going to get worse financially better as opposed to getting better. And I think we need to position ourselves now rather than wait till we're in a real bind and have to react under duress. I'm going to pass out a couple handouts. The first one is simply a revision of what's in the binder as far as the costs of renovating all of our buildings. And the starting point for this report was the Hunt study, but it was downsized based upon administration's review and recommendations of what they thought needed done. And the only change was my first, my first report did not include, in options two and three, I believe, if we closed Avis in one option and closed Saladesburg in the other, I did not include the renovations that would be required to handle the additional students in both schools. One was $2 million and one was $3 million, 3.5, I think. As far as consolidation, most like Cummings County districts have and continue to consolidate in light of increasing costs and declining enrollment. The most recent example is the closing of Stevens Elementary in Williamsport. Montoursville is currently looking at various options to consolidate or reconfigure their two elementary schools and middle school at costs ranging from $18 million to $41 million. Most would agree that having two outlying elementary schools with small class sizes is desirable, and closing either or both is not what we want. But is it affordable? Can we afford to have a configuration that is more Cadillac than a Chevrolet? Montoursville converted to a model in recent years in which elementary is now K through four, middle school five through eight, and high school nine through 12. I recently spoke to a parent who now has had two of his four children start fifth grade at the middle school. Although initially skeptical due to the age differential between fifth and eighth grade, there have been no problems since there is no physical interaction between the two grades during the school day. We have been pouring, in my opinion, a disproportionate amount of money into Saladesburg and Avis in considering the high instruction costs because of low enrollments. In which case, going into this year, it's roughly 375 students. And we will continue to do so with the $6.5 million renovation upgrade needs that have been identified by administration. The need's done. What about the other 1,800 district students? Every dollar spent inefficiently at Saladesburg and Avis is a dollar not available for the instruction and the athletic needs of the rest of the student population.
Sorry.
I have two other handouts, and I'll go with them briefly.
While we, while we pass it around, I want to apologize. I have my phone on for a family emergency, so sorry about that.
The first one was simply taking numbers off of the first report that I passed out and summarizing him and looking simply at Avis, Saladesburg, and Jersey Shore Elementary as far as the cost of upgrades in addition that administration is recommending. And as you can see, the first option with no consolidation, total of $6.6 million, $6.4 million of that is for Avis and Saladesburg alone. We haven't been talking about paving, but again, the numbers for Avis would be $228,000, Saladesburg $446,000, and JSE $172,000. But you can see for the total for option one, with no consolidation and no reconfiguration, we're talking $7.5 million if we would, if we would spend the dollars that are, that are being proposed. Option two is to close Saladesburg and Option two is to close Saudisburg, and of course, zeros under the Saudisburg column. To close Saudisburg would result in three point five million to renovate Avis to handle the additional students from Saudisburg. So basically, that's, that's the difference there. So the total for option two would be six point eight million versus the seven point five by not consolidating. Or the next column, you can see, there's a reduction of six hundred and sixty thousand if we close Saudisburg only compared to not closing anything. Option three is the reverse, closing Avis, keeping Saudisburg open. A lot of the same numbers. The renovation for Saudisburg to handle the Avis students would be two point two million, which is roughly one point three million less than renovating Avis. So the, the total cost would be six point eight million and a savings of six sixty-five, so almost the same as option two. Option four, closing both Avis and Saudisburg. The, the big difference there would be the ten, ten point eight million to add on to JSE. And as you can see, the total was eleven point two million. Or an additional cost versus option one, no, no consolidation of three point seven million. And option five is to close both schools, moving grade five to middle school. And the additional renovations for JSE and middle school would total a little over nine million compared to ten point eight for option four. And the net result is nine point four million dollar cost or one point nine million additional money needed compared to not doing anything. Now, one more column is the last column. If, considering closing both schools, there's a, an estimated annual cost savings of one point five million by closing both schools. That's every year. We would, we would get a payback. In other words, it would take us only two point five years to recover of the three point seven million of the, to cover the addition to JSE versus no consolidation. And for option five, the payback is one point three years. That's simply dividing, in the case of option four, the three point seven million by one point five million. After, if, if, just as an example, after option five, after two and a half years, that one point five million is there, we've, we've basically already paid for that additional cost to, to renovate those two schools.
Are you saying to add the classrooms to the middle school is only going to be two million dollars? And then seven million to add them to JSE?
That's, that's what Hunt has provided us, yes.
Okay. That, you're adding like the same number of classes, it just doesn't seem to drive, but that's okay. We'll have to check, I mean, you have to.
Yeah, well, these are, you know, we can, we can look at all these numbers. Obviously, they're, they're already, they're already antiquated because of inflation. But to keep apples and apples is, I think we need to. Any more questions on that report? Okay, the final one that I gave you was simply to show what it looks like if we would consolidate considering our current three schools and their average class sizes. So K through five, you can see for Avis, Saudisburg, and JSE, the average class sizes for twenty-two, twenty-three based upon the opening day enrollments, the report that we just got last Friday. And you can see, except for kindergarten, JSE is consistently for all the other grades above either one of those two schools. For instance, Avis, second grade, the average class size is thirteen. You can see the rest of them. Overall, for the whole three schools, the average class size is twenty-one. But for Avis, it's sixteen, and for Saudisburg, it's seventeen. Next column shows the administrative regs for class sizes that the district has established. And you can see that pretty much, just the way we are right now, every, every one is either below the range or at the bottom end of the range, in, in all cases, except for, I would say, fifth grade. Now, the next column, if we consolidate and move, you know, if we, if we would move everybody to JSE, our, our class sizes would be, as, as you can see, the, going down the column, fifteen point seven, eighteen point two, eighteen point oh, et cetera. The highest would be grade five at twenty-one point one. Again, every one of those is either below or at the lowest, low end. In fact, every one of them is below, except basically kindergarten is right on, basically. And first grade is, first and second grade are just a tick above the, the minimum. Now, if we reduce one class per grade, the next column shows what those numbers would look like as well. Kindergarten seventeen, first grade ten, second grade, I'm sorry, twenty, third grade twenty, I'm sorry, first and second grade twenty, third grade twenty-two, fourth grade twenty-four, and fifth grade twenty-four. Again, well, well within the ranges, and I would say for the most part, near the, the bottom for, for some of them. Now, I was able to, to get Lowell Sock's numbers, and you can see that pretty much consistently, they, they're, you know, a fair amount higher than, than we are. Even comparing to if we would reduce one class per grade for twenty-one, twenty-two, there is, there's, except for grade two, they're all above ours and five. Overall, twenty-four point one versus twenty-one point four if we would reduce every class by one. And interesting, Lowell Sock has the lowest tax.
Mr. Kinley, just for clarification, I know what you're talking about here. When you say reduce by one, what are you talking about?
One class, one class per grade.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And it's interesting, Lowell Sock has the lowest millage in the, this county. And we can probably attribute that in large part to the Golden Strip. They have a tax base that is, is much greater than ours. But even so, they've recognized and tried to operate efficiently at the elementary level and still have class sizes average at twenty-four for, for all six grades. I believe that is, in my comments, I think we can start to have a discussion. But I did want, I did want Dr. Omer and Mr. Wall to comment on the, the projects that, that they identified that need attention.
And I did get your question, and when Mr. Wall was on vacation last, part of last week. So we, I just, we finished it today, but I did want to just throw it on the board tonight because I, I just, we just finished it today. So I will get you all a copy of what Mr. Kinley had asked for. Based on the conversation at the last meeting is the list that you had from Mr. Wall that has building envelope and HVAC. What are the, we, those items are already prioritized out of the Hunt study. But what he had asked for was which of the items on that list are critical in terms of, we want to make sure they're done in the next two or three years so that we don't run into a situation that it's an emergency if that item isn't addressed. So you're going to.
I have it. I got, I finished it today, but I didn't want to just print it out and throw it on. But largely, it is HVAC and electrical type systems, things that are really critical infrastructure that we, if it's on that list and it's a high priority already, we want to make sure that it is on our attention for the next two or three years. So you're not in a situation where if it goes out, we have an extreme emergency. So that's what you're going to see when you get a copy of that. And I'm going to put it on this week's update. So you all have time to look through it.
And my second question would be to Mr. Enders as far as what he sees happening the next couple of years as far as our financial situation. I, I pointed out what I consider some of the big ticket items. But, and whether he has anything to add or change or challenge or any cost savings ideas that he might have.
Well, one of the topics we as a board are going to be discussing this fall. And to talk about the outlook of the district, what we struggled in the past with is to put a placeholder on the contract that's expiring. And so to sit here and say the financial, given outlook of the, of the district, it's very difficult to do that with a expiring contract for the largest group of employees in the district. As you all know, that expires on June thirtieth. So, I mean, that, that's part of the conversation we even have to have going into next budget cycle is do you want a placeholder in the budget for a contract? Or do you not want a placeholder in the, in the budget? Because I've always, Dr. Omer and I discussed this, and I've always kind of felt like the board has struggled putting that in there as an unknown. And if you don't want it in there, then we, we can discuss that, what that means. But that's, that's the big unknown right now for the district. Outside of what your figures and your, you discussed, I agree with your statement on Peasers. I provided those to the board, they're in your binder, of the future projected Peasers amounts. They came from, directly from the Peasers board. So you have those. Do I see huge increases like we've seen in the past? Now, we've kind of seen them starting to stay the plateau, but I think they're going up, they're upticking a little bit. The other item you mentioned about the fund, the decrease in the fund balance, I just think it's important to note for everyone to, to remember the primary reason for that decrease was the board's decision to commit one point six million of that for the current HVAC project. So I, I just don't want to give a perception to the community that we're bleeding cash because that was, in essence, a one-time expenditure for last and this fiscal year, it's going across fiscal years. So that was, that is the primary reason for that decrease, as you mentioned.
Anyone else that would like to comment?
I mean, just like that with the HVAC, I mean, we should have been able to cover all the schools with what we were given, but because of the increase in those costs, now we had to dip into our own funds to cover those things. And I know those things are very underplated for the projects to add on there. And Mr. Enders, like with, when the Nippenos was closed, that project was supposed to call, and I wasn't here, so I'm not sure, but it was supposed to cost, what, like eight million? And it cost fifteen million? So where did those extra funds come to pay for it? They had to borrow more money, correct?
I was not here when that, the, you know, I think you're referencing the JSE project.
Yeah.
I was not here either. I can, it's my understanding there was some cash paid on that project because I think it was prior to this board, right after I started, we got some plan come money back from that project, which was directly related to the cash spent on that project. There definitely certainly was debt incurred on that project. But I can't, I can't sit here and tell you exactly where the extra costs or the, the amounts that you, you stated were the amounts that, of the extras.
But if this project, if you add on to JSE and it says it's going to cost ten million and it costs thirty million, we're going to have to come up with that money somewhere. Because there's no plan con anymore.
Yes, you're correct. I mean, you would have to go back out for probably another debt issue for that.
That probably has more than JSE in it.
Yeah, I was just going to say.
That's the biggest, that's the biggest part of it.
Middle school was done at that time, and I believe Sal, there was a piece of it that Sal was done at that time, point in time, or? And plus, we had the high school done right around the same timeframe as well.
What is our interest rate on?
If you remember when, I, I, I think it was last year when we refinanced, it was below one percent. I want to say point eight something off the top of my head, but I distinctly remember it being below one percent. Because I remember Jamie Doyle, I remember Jamie Doyle saying how shocked she was when that came back.
It's in your binder that you were provided, because I knew Jamie put these at the bottom. If you go under the finances tab, the second page, you'll see all of our current debt listed there. I apologize, that is the refund, the refunding, that is the refunding portion of the debt. That's the plan con piece of it. I don't see it in there, I'm sorry. I thought that was, I saw a percentage, I thought that was.
We haven't really talked a whole lot about the, the twelve billion dollars for the athletic fields. I heard today that Milton just opened their season with a new turf field. Is that correct? Do you know that, yeah? And I think Warrior Run also did. So, I mean, there's only so much we can do. I, I think no matter what we do, is, I think borrowing is inevitable. I mean, if, if we're going to, if we're going to hold on to not, not incurring any more debt, or I think, I, I don't think that's a wise decision. I think we're going to be, buildings are getting, when I go on these tours with, with Mark and Dr. Omer, I mean, I consistently hear, you know, this, this is going to need replaced. This, it's going to be more difficult to get parts for this. And to have deferred maintenance of ten million. To have deferred maintenance of 10 million dollars plus, um, with really no plan, we, I don't think the way the, the budget process will look like in the next couple of years, that we're, we're going to be able to put any money aside. And you know, tax increases, I, I think we should, I don't think they should even be considered. Until we get a hold on, on some of these other issues that, where we can actually have some hard savings every year.
I have a question. Um, and this is kind of in regards to inflation. Um, in 2019, we had the Crabtree presentation. Is that correct?
I think it was before that.
18 maybe?
So, what has the Capital Projects Committee done over the last three years? What projects have you guys brought to the board to have, have done? And what, what did you guys vote on to spend?
Since I've been chairman, uh, things that I can remember, um, would be the recent uh, tearing down of the house.
That's still standing?
We just put out.
I mean, it's not the big now.
Yeah, it will be down. I mean, I've, I've only been chair since January. Uh, Mary maybe can speak to that because she was chair before.
You'd almost have to, you'd almost have to have Ben go through the budget of the Capital Projects because there's, there's different things we've done every year.
Yeah.
Not necessarily anything huge that I can remember off the top of my head. I had it for a year. Craig had it before that and so it's like it's been an ongoing, it's been an ongoing.
Well, I think that part of the problem is we don't have the money to do anything huge. I mean, then, wasn't the cameras, are we paying that out of Capital Projects?
Yep.
But that was just voted on and just done within the last year.
Last year, yeah.
No, the cameras were done.
Two years ago?
Twenty.
That was right at the start of the COVID.
Twenty, twenty.
Okay.
The fobs were last year.
I mean.
It's a fence thing and the electrical work to really can light the soccer field at some point and to get into the concession stand at the soccer field.
But as far as major, I mean, we just talked about the 1.5 million we needed to take out of, we didn't even take that out of the capital projects. We took it out of our operating budget to, to pay for the, the excess for the two HVAC systems. Uh, so, I mean, ideally.
But you had that study, correct? So, you could have been borrowing money three years ago to be doing these projects. No?
No, that didn't.
Have the objects planned and approved before you can start borrowing. It's not that simple.
Gotcha. Thank you for clarification.
Crabtree and the Hunt study weren't, did not give us the same information. The Hunt study basically gave us information on our buildings as they are now.
Okay.
The Crabtree was an update from an earlier study. Basically, it, it didn't, it didn't offer us those kinds of things that, that the Hunt study has. So, they're, they're not apples and orange, I mean, they're like apples and oranges.
Okay. And then I went through some numbers here. You were, have been talking about declining enrollment. Um, 8/30/19, Avis was at 169, JSE was at 649, and Sal was at 169. March of 20, Avis was at 166, JSE was at 623, and Sal was at 173. 9/24/20, Avis was at 167, JSE was at 547, and Sal was at 175. September of 21, Avis was at 171, JSE was at 559, and Sal was at 175. August of 2022, Avis was at 191, JSE was at 585, and Sal was at 187. So, to clarify, the declining enrollment is not at these two outlying schools. It is at JSE. So, I would like to know why people are leaving JSE.
Don't ask me. I have no idea.
I'm no, I'm just stating.
She's just throwing out questions and that's what we're here, that's part of the discussion to do that.
Is it something with the building? Is it something with the teachers? Is it, like that, that, that is a big decline in that building and it's a brand-new building? So, those were just a couple of things that came to my mind.
Dr. Omer, I have a question. So, being on other committees and meeting other school board members, I asked some questions about their district and, I mean, I just think that's like a legit and a privilege to be on other committees and see what other school districts are doing. Doing so, I found out that Williamsport, um, average classes are, they average at 25 students per class. So.
Now, is that across the whole district, Jesse, or is that?
Williamsport and where, yes, that is the average.
You're saying K to 12, that's their average. That is not, I, I mean, that's information, but averages are very misleading.
Okay. Well, this comes from a board member who's been on there at least eight years. So, I.
I understand that and, and I'm not, I'm not disputing the number. But to say that K to 12, the average class sizes are 25, when you might have 30 some, you might have 30 in the middle school, you might have smaller in the elementary school. When you look at the high school, you'll, you'll range anywhere from probably like 10 to 25. So, it's without more information, I'm just saying that's, that's a misleading number until you, unless you have more background with where the 25, how the 25 is, where it's coming from.
Okay. So, um, then I just want to say that.
And I'm not saying that it's not 25.
Yeah, yeah. So, the school board member who was on the board for eight years.
I need more information than just to say it's an average class size of 25.
Okay. So, the school board member who has been there long enough and on other committees with me doesn't know what she's talking about.
She didn't say that, Jesse. Don't look worse than that.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, I'm just, can I, can I just say what I have? I didn't interrupt you. Like, I just would like to say what I have to say. If she doesn't see that's a legit number, then it's not a legit number. Then I will get a legit number. I'm just saying, I asked on an average, what are class sizes? And she said approximately 25. So, approximately 25 is the average, not, I didn't say every class. So, I'm just saying, this is Williamsport. This is a larger school district, more funding, more ever, like it's, the Taj Mahal, am I wrong? Isn't that what we used to call it back in the nineties? So, it's a different classification. So, I'm bringing Williamsport in because I feel it is that different kind of element than our community area school district. Now, the other thing I'd like to say, um, also, the bigger picture, and this is going across not just Jersey Shore, like coming county, but in the state of Pennsylvania and the country that um, student numbers are dropping. And this comes out of the Philadelphia Inquirer. So, it says, public schools across the country have seen an exodus, which I found that an interesting word, the exodus, they're leaving, they're not coming back. Of students, including in Pennsylvania, were enrolled as dropping nearly 3% from 2020 to 2022. Newtown School District is 6.3% has dropped. That's a big number. And the fact that they use the word exodus does not sound like they're coming back. Most of these students are doing their classes online, which also brings me to the 27, the 27 credits that were required to graduate. Is that necessary?
It's necessary per our current board policy, yes.
Okay. So, what is the date?
The state requirement is 21.
21. How many, in this, and it, not just the cost, but I think of other students that have dropped out of school that were so close to the 21 credits that probably could have stuck it out instead of the 27 credits that seems so far away to grasp. I mean, I know my daughter, she messed up. She missed up one, one point to pass a class. So, she failed. So, I mean, you miss it by a hair. Like, you can miss anything by a hair. But is the 27 credits something as a board we could be looking at to save financially in this school district? Or is it one of those things we can't move on either?
You can move, you can move on anything if it's feasible. Um, I, some other school members have brought that up and some of the people in the public and I intend to give a little bit of history of that
Mm-hmm.
in, in one of the next, next couple of meetings, but this is not, not the time to do it as to where that came.
If it's a savings and this is for savings.
There's not necessarily a savings, just because you have less credit. That's, that's a misnomer. You're making the assumption that, that we have less credit, we can just start throwing out things. But that's, that's not necessarily true and part of it could be true. So, we need to look, we need to look at it.
To follow up on uh, Kayla's uh, question on the numbers, um, at the end of 22, 21, 22, JSE had 576. And the report that we just got for 22, 23 for JSE is 585. Now, we all know that during the year, we get monthly reports and those reports go up and down. Uh, so, I think we have to be careful as we're comparing, you know, individual reports that way. Another thing I'd like to say is.
Hold on a second, Wayne. Um, can I clarify that the starting number in August of 2019 was 649?
I'm, I'm not.
At JSE.
I didn't go back that far.
So, 649 to 586 is a big drop.
Yeah. But again, I believe we need to look at the total enrollment. And what, what can we do to have more equity in our class sizes? Instead of treating each one of them separately, which is why we got to have 13 in grade two at Avis this year. The last, the last report that I just gave you shows that if you combine everything, you can still have relatively close low class sizes well within our administrative, trade of regulations. But every, the more, the more schools you have and try to maintain that, that uh, low class size, the more difficult and the more costly it is.
Well, I actually agree with you, Mr. Kinley, um, on that statement. But sometimes when you're looking at the numbers of enrollment, is there a magic number that everybody feels like is the right or the wrong? What if there were 30 students at Avis, 50 students at Salvi's? What number makes us say that's just too low of a number to keep that voting going? I don't know if we could all actually come to an, a conclusion on, in an agreement on an actual number of how many students that would be. So, instead of focusing on declining enrollment alone, I mean, I would think that focusing more on cost is going to be the number one factor because over time, kids are going to come and go. That is out of our control. The money is much more of a controllable situation for us to spend or not spend. We're not going to ever be able to say, well, someone's that was moving out of the district and somebody is going to disenroll from school and try something new. There's always going to be those scenarios. We can't control that. But what we can control is the amount of money we spend and the amount of money we're willing to not spend, vice versa, both ways. So, instead of focusing on declining enrollment, there was something that Mr. Kinley said, and I was going to ask you if you don't mind, Mr. Kinley, to repeat that one statement. Before you started to go down the three handouts, you had said about the dollar amount for every dollar, it's right as Jesse's phone happens a lot. I, that's okay. For each dollar that is spent out of those outlined buildings, I thought you said that that was a dollar not being spent.
Well, it's, it, it's a dollar that's not available to
Correct.
to uh, address needs for the other 1,300 students.
So, it's a dollar not available.
So, those kids aren't worthy of that dollar?
What I'm saying is it's not about numbers in the aspect. I think we're so focused on how many students could or could not be at these outlined school buildings. Instead, I just think that if we focus more on what we're able to control when it comes to cost, what is that cost savings? If you did consolidate, I would ask the administration if it's possible at the next work session we have, I don't think this will be the last one. Could you give us hard numbers on what that would look like on the cost savings for personnel? That's what I'm asking for.
What are you supposed, you want to know?
If you consolidated, both outlined buildings would close and you consolidated to J, to JSE. I don't care about at the moment how much it's going to cost to the overall picture. I think it's one thing that you have to separate off just to see what personnel would be. Obviously, Mr. Kinley has proven his point that you're going to have exactly what we're asking for. Lower class sizes. Consolidation of in the fact that you'll have all the students being taught the same place. They're all going to receive the same amount of money, the same amount of treatment. In essence, they're all at the same place. It really doesn't get any better than that in essence because we're asking for lower class sizes and that's what we're going to fix at JSE. It's already fixed at the other outlined buildings. But what about at the elementary school in Jersey Shore? Those have much higher class sizes. If you bring them all together, then that solves that issue. That's one issue. I mean, that's the thing. There's a lot more involved than just class size.
You're talking about security. You're talking about financial status of what is able to be afforded.
And when I think about the athletic field, how wonderful would it be if we changed our policies on, to work in our favor a little bit better and sought out on, you know, money from the community? I'm sure that there would be entities that would be willing to donate to a new turf field, to a new stadium. It may not be overnight. This is something you'd have to plan. But we wouldn't have to fork out that 12 million dollars. It would be something that the community could get involved in. It's just an option to look at on.
We should look at all options. That's why we're here to discuss, that's why we're here to discuss different options.
But I hear a lot about declining enrollment and I mean, even though yes, it's true, you can prove that it's some of the buildings. But they're always, it's always going to be arbitrary. It's something we could never actually control. It's impossible. At least to me it is when I look at that. Um, but the money is much more easy to manage. Cause once we, you know, once you know what it is when you budget, then you can stay within that budget. When you know what it is you want to save to plan for something.
So, on the back of that statement, um, how long would it take in essence to have a, an actual architectural study done to see if JSE could be renovated or added on to, or the middle school, or the senior high if we have to move people? How long would that take just for the study? How long would it take to actually change those buildings? How long would it take or how much money would it take, speaking now that we are double the cost? So, $7 million would actually probably be around 14.
And none of those questions can be answered. They're being put down on the, they're being put on the floor right now. We're not going to, we're not going to second guess those answers.
So, I did, I, I think I'm on. I did answer that question in your binder. That was a question that a board member posed. From the time we approved the project until we would be moving kids into a new, newly constructed building is at least two years. From approval to planning, to designing, to constructing and then moving kids in, you would need two years.
Yeah. Number 18.
And then you get to bid and that'd be a third.
And your question was asked already. And your question was asked already, it is in the binder. Yep. If you look under Board Questions.
Dr. Omer, I think we need to kind of play through those, because I, I was flipping through those and I just noticed on page 2, 11, item 11. Item A, Roman Evil 2, JV Doyle provides you your interest rates for existing debt between 0.8%, 8% to 1.99% is your current existing debt.
Thank, thank you.
And then I think, Dr. Omer, you were referencing further back before the map.
Yep. So, after, one of the questions that was posed was scenarios with, well, some of the things that Mr. Kinley pointed out. So, if you go past the questions in your binder, there are scenarios that include maps, and on the top of each one, we'll show you, based on the questions I was asked, different configurations, what the staff reductions would look like, what the, what the savings would be for those, and a map of the building, and how it would be restructured. So, those are there.
Mr. Kinley, just to, just to summarize, if we're looking at, if you're looking at your scenario option of closing both schools, then you're looking at a K to four in the elementary, five to eight in the middle school, nine to 12 at the high school. Is that a correct summary?
There, there's two options. One is, one is to continue with K through five.
Okay.
The other one is continue, or go to K through four in elementary and five through eight at middle school.
So, but one of them, you have K to five in the middle school, you leave it as it is? Okay, okay. I just was trying to make, trying to make a clarification there. So, it'd be six through eight in the middle and nine through 12 at the high school. Okay. Now, one of the things that was on the last agenda, and it's basically coming under further discussion, was reconfiguration. And one of the ideas of reconfiguration is, is to set up a school so that the complete grade level is within one building. An example of this would be at JSE, this is an example because there's multitudes of ways you can do it. Would be K to three, which would make it a primary school. Saudisburg would be grade four and Avis would be grade five. This would allow K to three, which is, would be JSE, to be a primary school with the main focus of teaching our students to read and reach grade level. There could be several different scenarios for reconfiguration if you had the complete grade level in one building. Now, if you go to do something like that, the complete grade level in one building, this last handout that Mr. Kinley gave us with the consolidation of the schools all into one building, you would have the same savings as you have, you'd have the same savings doing that as you'd have here on personnel. Why would we reconfigure? I often hear about the differences in class size, and that would be your biggest reasons to configure all grade levels in one, in one building. With the entire grade in one building, you'd be able to balance out class size. And balancing out the class size, you may not need all the teachers that you have at that level, which would be a cost savings. Another item I hear, it's always so hard to go from elementary to middle, middle to high school, and part of that is because having a group of buildings coming together and, and having them all in one building, the kids would know each other. Your kindergarten teacher, there's, there's no other kindergarten kid besides in that one building or first grade, or what the case may be. Now, again, that reconfiguration can take multiple, you could still even, you could still close the school and do some reconfiguration where you keep one school open or, or two schools open. It's just something I'm putting out on the table because that's the purpose here. We wanna know all our options. We don't wanna second guess and say, six months down, I wish I would have because, but I didn't know that. So, I'm, and if the, the, other people could have other options too. I'm not limiting it to this, so just be aware of that. Another thing I would like to throw out, and this, this is sort of like pie in the sky, and it may be, and it's very simplified, but it's something to think about, maybe not in this, not exactly in this manner, but let's take, let's take a closer look. And I titled it for myself, Thinking Out of the Box, Pay As You Go Scenario. I was taking some time to look over the financials that we have in, in our book here, and Scenario 1 is the only scenario that doesn't raise our taxes. From my standpoint, it also wastes tax money. This has us borrowing over three years and for the first five years, only paying the interest. That is a total of approximately $5.4 million of capitalized interest. What could we do with $5.00 million instead of paying it to, as an interest? Now, let me digress for a minute. I started this by looking at the financials, and then I got to thinking about the boilers. That was a big conversation not too long ago. So, I reached out to Mr. Wall just for asking questions on the boilers themselves. The high school and the middle school, obviously, this year are receiving, this summer are receiving new boilers. JSE received new, two new boilers in 2014, the same type of boilers that are going into the high school this summer. The Saudisburg boiler was put in place in 1967, which is the year I believe that it opened, and the Avis boiler was put into place in 1976. So, at this point, we have five buildings, we have six new boilers in three of the buildings, and we have two older ones. I, I asked him if the older boilers would last a few more years, and his answer to me was he believes they will as they are built much different than machinery today in many ways and parts have always been available. And he also said, you have, you have, on the other flip of the coin, you have an efficiency issue. So, I'm giving both sides there. I also realize that the roof at Saudisburg is the oldest roof in the district, and this is the la, is in the last year for the warranty. Just because the warranty runs out doesn't mean you need to replace it immediately. You yourselves don't replace every item that you own when the warranty runs out, such as your car, such as your refrigerator, such as your stove. When the warranty runs out, you don't say, okay, I gotta get a new one because it might break tomorrow. So, in that, in that financial scenario one, it has us borrowing 36.6 million over a three-year period. I think it's 10, 16, and, and 10. The first five years, we pay approximately $5.4 million in capitalized interest. We would continue to pay the 2.5 million each year on the debt to be paid off in 2051. We would have paid back 55 million over the 22 years. Therefore, 23.9 million would have been paid in interest, of which does not help the school in upkeeping the facilities. What could the school have done with the 23.9 million? In 2030, your debt is paid off, and the district will have been paying 2.5 million each year on the debt. So, any addition to buildings would not be completed before, any additions to the building, we would not be able to move those kids into that position until 2025, 2026 school year. At that time, we would be much closer to paying off the debt. So, starting in 2031, take the 2.5 million of debt service and put it into capital projects. We could upgrade as needed and complete our athletic fields without costing the taxpayers any additional money. Example could be that one year we might turf the athletic, turf the football field and resurface the track. You could do that under 2.5 million. Another year, we might have to take two buildings and put on two roofs. So, you would do, you would do a combination, don't, a, a combination of things. It is something to think about and look at before we continue to just pay money because we want things done now. This is a rough idea of a pay-as-you-go and to get the most bang for our buck, and it's just a thought and it's something that should be discussed and see if there's any legitimacy that this is something that we can follow down the road. We would be able to be paying ourselves to do the work that we need to do and not continue. We, I understand if you're building a building, you have to borrow for the third or years. There's no question, there's no question about that, but something else to look at. Anybody else wanna add to the discussion or add some scenarios?
So, I have some questions about properties that we have. So, Saudisburg is like 36 acres. And Avis is about 76, what is worth more, more total? So, the question is, we're closing these things for one or however it works. And we have somebody survey those properties to see if we can basically parcel it off so that we're, if we were gonna sell the building with parking lot or whatever, sell that separate from the rest of it. Question is, does it have to be an auction sale, or can we sell it outright ourselves? Do we have to, is there fees involved with all of that? I'm sure there are, you know, but to look at getting the biggest bang for our buck if we're closing something, because I don't think you got the biggest bang for your buck when valid, to be honest with you. But, that's just my thought on that. So, if you look at the future, let's say, and this is just my synopsis of this, if enrollment would go off, okay, and we close both of those elementary schools, we add on Jersey Shore to get what we need for right now, what do we do in the future if we have more students coming into this area? Where do we put them? Are we gonna add on to the middle school again, or what, what are we doing? In my opinion, I don't know that adding on to that middle school was the right option either. That's an old building also, you know, and we're putting boilers in there now, which I get because I used to do that myself, but that, the, the thing I'm looking at here is I don't want the, the district to go in the hole doing this. So, excuse me, like the Little Lake Fields and everything that are at Saudisburg, that, in my opinion, could be done like they did over in the nose with the tires. So, if they do that, fine and dandy, with however many acres that takes up. But I don't, personally, I don't like the way the super system is over there at Saudisburg. That's kind of headway in my opinion. And there's a lot of things with that building, in my opinion, that it's gonna take a lot of money to fix that thing up. So, I guess what I'm asking is, if we separated it and parceled, would we be benef, would it be beneficial for us? Now, I don't know how much of it can be developed or any of that either. So, that's something that would have to be looked at also. But at Saudisburg, I'm sorry.
At one time, Mike, at, at Avis, we did subdivide four lots, but it ended up not, not, didn't end, and it was for Habitat for Humanity, if I remember, and that never ended up going through. But there are areas, and that Mark might be able to tell us. I know that all that land is not usable at, at, at Avis. I don't know about, I don't know about Saudisburg.
But we had problems.
Definitely some, I think you were, when we went on that tour.
Right.
We barely made it across the yard.
Right.
So, that, that's, I mean, yes, the answer to your question is, yes, they could be subdivided. Yes, we can sell lots. Most, it would be easiest to list it with the Realtor, just like anybody else. But there are some places where we would have to be careful because there really isn't.
So, then remember when you're doing that, then you could also be increasing the enrollment of the school. No, I don't think it's a bad thing, but you close off where we can send them as well.
There's three options, you go to sell it, seal it, caution, or you can do, you can do a private sale, but then it'll have to be approved by the judge.
You mean that the cost has to be approved by the judge, or the fact that you do a private? That's what I mean, I mean, you have to, they'd have to look at what it was.
There's gotta be a determination that it was sold for.
I would think so.
School code is clear that the money has to go towards debt service or capital projects.
No, 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 no. I just wanted to add to yours that Saudisburg, I'm pretty sure, like, companies like Williams would be interested in that property. Do you know what I mean? So, I, I think there, there, there would be interest. I don't think, you know, like, who wants to buy this in Avis or Saudisburg? You know what I mean? So...
Another option, when you're talking about that too, is if we would potentially close the school. You don't have to sell it immediately. You can give yourself three years and say, was it a mistake or not a mistake, and then, and then sell it. You would be minimal cost as to just make sure things, now, I'm not saying to do that, but that's something that you can do because that question you asked, what happens if we start to need something more?
But my other question was like, Avis. Avis probably has no property out there, put baseball fields, softball fields out there. That's a big area next to that school. I'm not sure how many acres that is or whatever, but I, you already had two play, baseball fields laid out on it, or ball.
Isn't the township in Avis, don't they take care of the ball field out there right now? I'm just saying, I'm just saying, like, there's other thing, like, other things will help. Like, we, like, our township, the Pi, in Piatt Township, we have a ball field, but they take, you know, if anybody wants to use it. So, I'm thinking, you know, it's not just a burden for the school district.
I don't know if we're saying it's a problem for the sports. If we could get a determination to put that. We could possibly
Yeah.
take some of that cost off with that. So, I'm not, but I'm not sure we wanna look at the sports thing first, in my opinion. I think that we wanna look at what special kids start with. Having said that, I would say that my thoughts on Saudisburg is like the valley, it's out of the way. Cell services isn't the greatest up there. How long does it take for the police to respond for something, the accident happens? And, yeah, so, is that truly what we wanna look out for our students? That, okay, if they're in Avis, you're sure the police station right down the hood, Avis, right? There in Jersey Shore.
And it's gonna get closer eventually because they're moving them up on where the fire hall is, where the fire trucks are. They bought all that land up there to put the police station up there.
That's just my thoughts on what we're talking about here. I don't know what the right answer is for sure at this point, but any way you look at this, we're gonna need money to do it. Whether we're borrowing it or however it works out. If we consolidate, we're definitely adding on to something, so we're gonna have to have money to do that. I don't know how we're gonna go about it.
And that's why I said the reconfiguration, you can look at multiple things because you can put K to three in JSE without any problem. And I believe you can put four and five in Avis without any problem. But I don't know that for definite. That's a question we ask, and we look into it in more detail. That's why you throw those things out there.
And this is the option that I was gonna be getting. Basically, it's stating that you're going to leave Jersey Shore the way it is, and you're going to basically renovate Avis and update everything.
You can't touch anything.
Four and five in Avis.
So, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have to renovate it yet to do that?
Correct, but I'm, you're gonna have to do something eventually.
You can't touch anything.
Right.
Because, I mean, just what the admin decided we should be doing in these places, you know, that maintenance stuff has to be done too, you know? So, if we're gonna, let's say, Avis. So, at Avis, initially it was $10 million to do all the renovations according to what.
Right, and that's true, but you gotta remember, you gotta remember, Mike, the renovations, they, we do not have to do the renovations by making individualized classrooms.
I know, but what I'm saying is, we brought that down to, like, according to what.
Oh.
Do what we usually do and take that work. And that's basically just redoing the brick and doors and stuff like that, the HVAC stuff. Here again, I'm not sure what the best option is here, but that's just my understanding.
Just to clarify, you said Scenario 3?
Yeah, that's in this.
It sounded like, it sounded like you described Scenario 1, but I, I could be wrong. Oh, okay, sorry about that.
This was Option 3 of the day it would out there.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
And that, that adds a gymnasium to Avis, and then it adds four fifth-grade classrooms, plus it would add one, two, three, four special ed rooms, and restrooms and stuff for the gym.
Well, the gymnasium is another issue that Hunt made the comment that both, both schools, Avis... Well, the gymnasium is another issue that Hunt made the comment that both, both schools, Avis and Saudisburg, since we only have a multi-use room, that it's overused. Now, I don't think, I don't think they made that up, it must have been from input from somebody.
Well, the biggest issue that we have operationally in those spaces is, the biggest issue that we have with them operationally is, when lunch is going on, nothing else can happen. So, if you have a phys ed teacher there, or some, you know, somebody else who needs to use that space, for an hour and a half a day, lunch is happening. So, you have scenarios where you may have a teacher that's assigned to that building that day to teach phys ed, and for an hour and a half, they can't go outside for phys ed, you can't have phys ed. So, I think that was why you saw that in the Hunt report, in terms of...
Right.
You have to decide, is that an efficiency issue enough that you're going to spend that money, or you're just gonna say, it's not a requirement to have that space added, but you, as a board, have to decide, is that the best use of your staffing?
But you, you and Mark did not identify that as, as part of your...
No.
Right.
No.
That's what I'm saying, it's outside of...
Right, you couldn't do all that, what you said, with adding special ed and then gymnasium, and all that stuff for two million dollars. It's gonna be that fifteen million dollars.
Right, yeah.
I know we're running on time, can I add one more thing?
You can add.
Yep, sure.
Okay.
To follow up with what Mike said, and I know Wayne had also said this. So, I think saving money and safety are like at the top of the pyramid, basically. Right, and kind of how we're seeing it. So, for me, my perspective is, and I know nobody likes to hear this word, or this phrase, one campus, and that would have police in a central location, and safety measures. I don't think we could take the same safety measures and share that outside of a campus at that level, correct? I mean, does that make sense? Okay, so, for me, like, the safety aspect of it would be my first approach. Second, I wouldn't wanna go into the details of safety, it's crazy, but as an example, for a bank, like, I had brought it up at my, my, at one of my banks, and I had asked them a question about security measures. And of course, they encouraged me, she said, can't discuss that with you, Jesse. So, why would she tell me where their breaches would be in a bank? But, there are, and, you know, Fort Knox is usually what we think of as a bank, as safety. And I think that that would be my approach from here on, along with what Wayne and Michelle had said about the only thing that we can control is finances. And I think safety is something that we also don't have control over, that we have to have it at the highest we can. That's all I wanted to say.
I agree with you with the safety, safety's been an ongoing issue, we just had, we just had audits, if you call it an audit from the state police, that we should soon be getting, either this, either the month coming up or October. And we can look at what's there, then that'll give us a better handle on how bad or how good they really, how good our buildings are.
Okay.
Well, this is something that, something that I put together and something that you can look at, it may not be feasible, it may be feasible partway, you know, anywhere you can save money, because when you borrow, you're paying, you're paying twice out, or three times, depending on how long you take it.
Well, just to follow up on that, Mrs. Thomas, isn't your scenario that you threw out there basically the scenario of the first one that's listed in the binder, in essence?
I have no idea what the first one off the top of my head is in the binder. But you could do something like this, you could then reconfigure where that takes care, like I said, you could take a couple of these and pull together. If you reconfigure that, you get them in one building or two, or two buildings even, you're saving, you're saving on the, on the personnel.
Correct, which was what I was gonna point out, in the scenario one, in the grade reconfiguration, regardless of how you configure grades, the bottom line was, in that particular scenario, you're closing Saudisburg only.
I think you're right on that, I don't know the numbers one from the other, but there is...
But it is here, and that cost savings on personnel only is eight hundred and thirty-five thousand. So, if you compound that over three years, you're looking at two and a half million dollars savings alone on personnel.
You have the, you have the building part itself, if you would close one, you'd have the building part itself too.
Correct, but that only adds to what you're saving. And, I mean, I realize we're not gonna, I mean, in all reality, you're not going to close the building most likely and sell it the next day. I realize there will be maintenance and maintaining that building for the period that we have it in our possessions. But, the reality is, when I said about controlling the money, what we can control, that scenario is exactly that. You would be saving two point five million dollars with the closure of one school, that being Saudisburg, for through, over a three-year period of time. That's the minimum amount. In essence, from what our administration, because that's not coming from Hunt, that's coming from Dr. Almer and Ben, I would assume it was Ben that helped you.
I don't know.
That's coming from them, so they have our numbers, obviously, and they're up to par on what that number would be, and that's what's listed out here. I must have missed that, I was looking much more at the Hunt study versus all the scenarios in the back of this. So, I apologize that I never saw that, I looked through and saw maps and scenarios, but must have missed, obviously, what was underneath there in that, under the annual staffing. So, I apologize, because that, that I never saw.
It's okay, it's a lot of information.
Well, then your head starts spinning because...
I wasn't sitting there like reading this binder, like, you know, I know, like, every ten hours, but, I mean, I had really looked it over, I just, I obviously missed that, but that is actually, yes, in essence, I don't know the right word for that, but it's comforting to know that that number is where that is. That's a significant savings, if we decided to go that direction.
How much would you be borrowing?
Nothing.
Nothing at all?
No, because this is Mary's reconfiguration strategy of just closing Saudisburg, being student, located free, possibly, that, that's just the number that was picked, K to three, maybe K to two, I don't, they would know, the administration would know. But there would be no additions, no borrowing money, in essence, for just closing that building. Because K with three would go to JSE, four to five goes to Avis, six to eight is the same, and nine to twelve saves the same. That, this scenario listed here, and that money, obviously, is a large amount of money to save. So, you're looking at just shy of a million dollars. Each year. But where you're saving that is going to be in personnel, you're not saving it in essence so much on the actual building. I think you know that as well as I do, like, once your home is paid off, it's not like you're constantly throwing money into your house unless you have major, major issues, so, but what your cost is at living at your home goes to your utilities and food. And so, it's the same concept, you know, you're saving on our, our, here at the school district, our major, you know, where we're spending money is in personnel. And I mean, that's just the reality. So, which I believe was marked at like seventy-two percent of our budget, so you wouldn't be borrowing any, any money. You would just be redirecting students. And I mean, I don't know what that looks like under this scenario of...
No, you have to start, you have to start fine tuning those numbers, is what we have to start doing.
But, maybe that would also be a direction to go if you wanted to have student class sizes be more equalized. That will help that scenario, I would think.
So, that's the thing I think we all need to do for ourselves, is identify, like Jesse did, what are your top three priorities? And then say, okay, so what are the scenarios that we've talked about or laid on the table? Do we want to see fine tuned, so that we can make an intelligent decision? And as we start to get that, then we can look at when the next work session can possibly be, because I think one of the big pieces that we need to hear before we move too far, much further, is the safety audits that the state police gave us. Not to put you on the spot, are you looking at September or October?
Well, we, we did provide that overview in an executive session, which that has to be. What additional information do you, I mean, you have the overview of that report, do you want the whole report?
Well, the overview, I guess we would need the overview of the report, as must be done, that, like, give us two priorities and what the cost would be. I mean, you gave us that, but we have no idea what cost is for those things.
Also, can you include what could be covered under the Estor funds, the, or whatever we got from the state?
The new funds, whatever.
Oh, the PCCD funds for safety and security, yes.
That one, thank you.
So, our safety thing will be next, then we, again, think of your top three priorities, and then put together what scenarios you'd like more fine tuned, and we're not all going to agree on what scenarios we'd like more fine tuned, but we need to get as much general, we need to get as much exact information as possible and go from, and go from there. Any other statements? At this point, I will open up the floor for courtesy of the floor then. Please give us your name, and address, and you will have three minutes.
Shelley Helm, Pyatt Township. Mary, I'm gonna address you, because I can, because we're not, this isn't like a real...
I'm the president, you're allowed to do that.
Yeah, and I, I don't know, I think you made some progress tonight. Just listening to six of the members here, it sounds like we might be moving some direction. And thanks to Michelle, who actually kind of put it maybe, so...
Don't pull names into it.
So, sometime, well, sometimes people don't understand what you're talking about, so you have to go down to their level. So, thank you. And I'd like to address another thing that a board member, one, two, three, to the right there, had discussed and brought up the numbers at JSE as declining, and at Saudisburg Elementary and Avis Elementary staying the same. Well, you know, you kind of need to take a look at the populations in those general areas, they're, number one, different. The Democrat, the demographics of the residents are different. In town, Jersey Shore is a transient town, it's greater than fifty percent rental properties. Usually, those on the outskirts are ones who actually have built their houses and own a lot of property and stay there. So, I wanted to address that, because I, I don't know, sometimes I listen to things from a distance at home, and I just don't understand, it scares me. It scares me when you play on your phone, when you really should be listening to what's going on. And Mary, you're right about the top three things, and you know safety's number one, education's number two, and Skeeter went the number three, because he's, I'm, I'm, I just wanted to say thank you for being my representative, because athletics really is on the tail end of everything. We have a lot of people here in our district who live on fixed incomes. They can't afford the athletic part, but what we are responsible for is the education of these students, that's number one. And as to safety, I sat on the board sixteen years ago for eight years, nothing's changed with the safety at all.
Well, I disagree with you on that.
No, not one thing, not one thing.
There are things that have changed.
No.
Things that have changed that are different as to what the, what the state police look for than they did ten years ago.
Well, yeah, I don't know, I could give a scenario, but I don't want to, okay?
Okay.
But I'm just telling you, the outskirts of town, you call the Pennsylvania State Police and see how fast it takes them to get to your place. I live in their area, next day.
The only one that, there's only one school that that's the case, though.
Well, that's a big problem.
Mr. Pryor?
Bob Pryor, Mifflin Township. I do think there was some movement on the board tonight, and I thank you for that. Madam President, I'd just like to ask you, though, or point out, that your idea of putting one through three into Jersey Shore, and then fourth and fifth in a separate outlying elementary, so you have to consider transportation costs increasing.
I understand that, I'm saying that these are not, we do not have fine tuned numbers at all.
Right, okay, but anyway, I'm asking the board to keep an open mind here. I know some of you would just as soon close your mind, because I'm up here speaking, but I'm asking you to keep your mind open. The design populations of those outlying elementary schools was three hundred and fifty or more students. So, these little ups and downs in the population aren't gonna make any difference here, they're still only gonna be about a third full. And when it comes to paying down the debt, closing inefficient buildings will save recurring expenses. Selling those same, or selling those same buildings to businesses, for example, will bring tax dollars and job growth into our community. That's a plus. Also, I'd like to thank my male director in my region, since I can't say his name, for his intense work in preparing in time as well, his presentation. But just some information, the student population decline began in nineteen eighty-seven. That's thirty-five years ago. Times are changing. Now, questions, would you maintain your property the same way you're handling the maintenance and budget of this school district? Think about that. Heating and cooling, empty rooms? Another question, after the children move away, would you consider downsizing? Other words, selling your larger home to buy a smaller home that you can operate more efficiently, especially during your retirement? The situation in this district is very similar to that scenario. Use your common sense, that's what we taxpayers expect of you. We're paying the bill, and you are too, but you need to be accountable. So, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Steve Helm, Pyatt Township. Good conversation tonight, a lot of information came out, I hear adding a round of ideas. I'm certainly grateful to hear that people are willing to at least discuss the future of our district, because that's really what you're here for. You're here for the future of our district. And one of the questions that you need to ask yourselves is, where do you see, how do you see funding this district and its costs for the next five years, ten years, fifteen years? You're on the horizon of negotiating a teacher's contract, they have a cost to them. They're not gonna come in and say, we're good, we're not, we're just gonna go for everything we have now, and we'll just renew what we have. There's gonna be a cost associated there. There are a lot of things that board members here now today will plan for, will budget for, and perhaps have a vision for that you won't be here to see happen. And that's what the purpose of this whole meeting is, is to lay out the foundation and the work that should be done by future boards, by future people, and that is also in design to take care of the needs of the community, the education of our students, and trying to provide that education at a reasonable cost to the taxpayers and the stakeholders that you're representing. Every one of you here to represent the community. And, and I'm not gonna say any of you are doing a poor job, but I think that it, it's important for you all to pay attention, to take the advice, to have an open mind, and consider options, rather than say, oh, no, I'll raise taxes before I close the school. I think that it would also pay to have a conversation with Dr. Almer. I think that it, it would also pay to have a conversation with Dr. Almer. And I think, you know, I think it would be key to ask him what he would recommend, and listen to what he says and why. He's the person you trust with administering the school throughout the week, throughout the month, in between your meetings and so on. Why wouldn't you then trust his vision for where this district would go, five years, 10 years, 15 years from today? So, the, those are all things that, that I sit back here and I listen and I think about, but that's your job, that's what you need to do. You need to set that, set that plan in place, set the ship a sail, so that it gets to the harbor on the other side for the next board members. You, you, it's, it's irresponsible to sit here and say, well, we're, we're, we're good for this year, well, what about next year? And what about the next year? How are you going to fund all of these things, year after year after year after year? And, and you hear that 70% of your budget is salaries, you know, and that's, that's where I keep hammering on the need for 27 credits to graduate. Maybe when you start looking at your packages and you start looking at what you could configure and what you could change, maybe you want to whittle some of those down, because if you ask again, Dr. Almer, maybe he could give you a, a figure for the, what the cost savings would be if you were to pare down some of those teachers, and some, some of those professional staff. Closing a building would do the same thing. When you hear other board members say, well, closing a school would, would result in $800,000 a year annually in savings, that's $800,000 in freedom in your current budget that you could earmark to do a capital project, to start saving for five years down the road to do maybe an improvement to the athletic fields. Athletics should come well beyond, well after. We have safety in our schools, and we have good teachers teaching our students, thank you.
Thank you.
Merle Swizer, Mifflin Township. I don't like getting up here and stalking, because I'm a, I'm not a very good talker, but one point that comes to my mind is what is the mission of this school district? Would somebody please tell me what the mission statement is for this school district? Because I haven't, it's been mentioned, I don't think I've heard it mentioned in all these discussions, going back to what our mission is. So what is the mission of this school district?
In a simplified statement, it's growing, learning, and success.
Say, say that again, Mary.
Growing, learning, and success.
Growing, learning, and what's the other thing?
Success, succeeding.
I guess the bottom line is really learning, we're all about learning, and, and what we, what we, what we do to make sure that the children are learning, and we set up a structure, and we, and we go for it, but I think we should, our mission should be at the forefront of our thought process. Will this help us accomplish your mission, et cetera? Do you agree? Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close courtesy of the floor. Anything from the board members for the good of the order? This meeting is adjourned.